I will call the meeting to order for December 2nd, 2025. If you all would join me for a moment of silence, please. If you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much for that. First of all, I want to recognize all of you all are here this evening. Thank you for joining us. I know that we have a lot of great family and friends and visitors in the audience. So thank you all for taking some time out today. We have current and past elected officials that are in our off- uh, off- or office. In our office today. How about that? It's a big office today. So if you'd like to thank Representative Harry Warren for taking time out of his schedule to attend this evening. Also, Rowan County Chairman of the Board, Greg Eds, and also Mayor Paul Woodson, who has been here specifically. We also have Councilmember Mr. Henderly, who's joined us. So if I missed anybody, sorry, but thank you all so much for being here. One thing I would like to say is it's a very special meeting. We will move through it as efficiently as we can. So thank you all for your patience in advance. So also, we're also happy to have everybody that's here with us. We do follow a written agenda, which is available on our website at SalisburyNC.gov/Agendas. City council meetings are broadcast on WSRTV, our local government station, which is available on Spectrum, Channel 16, and Hotwire, Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website, WSRTV.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website at SalisburyNC.gov/Videos. At this point in time, we will be retiring our current council, so I would need a motion for us to adjourn.
So move it.
We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Current council is adjourned. So we can remove our plaques. And we will turn this over to Mr. Green.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the City of Salisbury swearing-in ceremony for Salisbury Mayor and City Council. This is an exciting night, and I congratulate those that were elected to serve and who were willing to give their time and energy to serve this great community. With that said, let me invite up Mayor-elect Tamara Sheffield to the front, where City Clerk Connie Snyder will administer the oath of office for mayor.
Yep, forgot that part. Okay. Now we're ready. Place your left hand, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Tamara Sheffield.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor.
As mayor.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Green, for taking over there for a moment.
Just a moment.
Jokingly, he said he was gonna pass a bunch of stuff, just so everybody knows what happened earlier. At this point in time, we will begin to administer the oath to the council members, and I will turn that over to City Clerk Connie Snyder. Connie?
If Ms. Susan Clutz and her family would join me, I'll administer the oath of office for council. Place your left hand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Susan Ware Clutz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office as council member.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Harry McLaughlin Jr., and if you'll bring your family. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Harry McLaughlin Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office, council member.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Jamel Black, if you'd come up with your family and...
They all can come. Come on. That's right. Come on. Y'all can come. That's right.
There you go. There you go. Wow. There we go. I love it. Get Jamel, get Jamel in there somewhere.
We don't do things alone, so for sure.
Oh, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Jamel Antonio Black.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution of laws and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office as council member.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
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 Join us, sir. Congratulations.
There's no wonder you were one.
Mr. Paul Johnson Jr., and if you'd bring your family and...
I am for the city.
I state your name.
Aye, Carlton Alexander Jackson Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as council member.
The duties of my office as council member.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So a little more business we need to get to tonight. The next part of the election process of this is to receive nominations for the mayor pro tem. Does anyone have a nomination to put forward for the mayor pro tem?
I'd like to nominate Susan Clutz for mayor pro tem.
Any other nominations? Council have a nomination to appoint Councilmember Susan Clutz to mayor pro tem. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Councilmember Clutz. At this point in time, could our City Clerk Connie Snyder please administer the oath to Councilmember Clutz?
Yes, ma'am. And if your family would like to join you again? Place your...
Excuse me one minute.
Feels like... Can't get out of it, you guys.
Sue, would you like to join us?
Please, mommy.
Okay.
I state your name.
Aye, Susan Ware Clutz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as mayor pro tem.
The duties of my office as mayor pro tem.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
So for all of you in the audience, in just a few minutes, I will take a short recess. So if you'd like to leave, you can. So just bear with us for a few minutes for some remarks and a little bit of recognition, if you don't mind. And I'll cut us free, okay? So you don't have to go through some of the boring stuff. It might be interesting. You're welcome to stay. Don't get me wrong on this. You're welcome to stay, so. At this point in time, I'd like to give everyone a chance to make remarks, and I would like to start with our newest council member, Mr. Jamel Black.
Oh, okay. Well, first and foremost, I am grateful. I'm humbled and I'm honored to work with a group of council members with experience that loves the City of Salisbury. Not only council members, the city manager, city attorney, the clerks, and definitely the city staff, which really makes us, our job is easy. Not easy because it comes to the decision, but the people that's really behind the works of how the city really, really moves. I'm grateful to be a part of that and just creating an even stronger atmosphere within our city, our community. I'm definitely grateful for always supporting me and just showing up. Even for the ones that may not have voted for me, I look forward to working for you also, because that's what it's about. It's about bringing a collective group of people to do the great work that the city has done and that will continue to do. So I'm grateful for my fiance, my family, my mom, my dad, my grandparents, every one of you all that really showed up to really come and support. I brought them all up because I knew that, you know, we cannot do anything alone because teamwork will really make the dream work, and this team up here will really make Salisbury thrive even harder than what it's thriving now. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you all in the audience, each and every one of you all up here and behind the dais, and just out in the community that wasn't able to come, that's online, that's just, they say, hey, they don't know where the city hall is at. We really, really get ready to work and continue to work that we always done, but on a different side. So thank you, and I'm humbled. Thank you.
Councilmember Mr. Jackson, any comments?
First, I want to, I want to thank God for the blessing, and I want to thank my wife for putting up with me throughout this process. As Jamal said, we, we don't do anything alone. And I received a tremendous amount of support from my family, who, they're all not here, but I'm grateful and thankful that you love me enough and care enough to be here. I want to thank the mayor. We had a number of conversations over the last few months, and I had some doubts. I can't repeat everything she said, but because she is, she...
Barely y'all know me.
She's extremely frank, but she reassured me that this is nothing to worry about, and I trust her leadership for our city. I had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Green before he came to the City of Salisbury from a professional role that I hold, and our city is in good hands. The council, there's a wealth of knowledge and experience here. Can't begin to even say how much experience our mayor pro tem brings. And of course, the mayor and Harry. Jamal, we're the new kids on the block, so to speak. But what makes the city run is that person on the end, the clerk. So don't let anybody fool you. Connie, Connie is the grease on this wheel. Thank you all for your vote, if you voted for me, and if you didn't vote for me, thank you for voting. Our democracy is important. We never accomplish anything independently, as I said previously. The decisions that we will make will be collective. We may not always agree, but we will learn to disagree and honor each other's vote and decision. So God bless you all for being here tonight, and thank you so much.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Well, it is a blessing to be here, a humbly come for everyone, and you know, you talk about teamwork. I have to think my helpmate, because times I'm not there, long hours, that she's still there supporting, and I much appreciate it. Yeah, I wouldn't think I'll be here for four years if it wasn't for her helping out and going through whether or not, you know, bother running again or what the case may be. You know, you talk about doubts. It doesn't have to be just a year. It's four years in, you know. You still have, wow, what about this? I've got this to take care of. But by the grace of God, I'm here, and the people who voted, thank you. End up getting four years with the new rules. Thank you. I look forward to serving this community as I've always done, you know. It takes a community to make things work, and it's just not about this or that, but it's really hearing everybody. You know, the thing about being in the store, I get to hear everybody come in, you know. I'd rather have sometimes a phone call, but they face those conversations, the people come in. But you know, it's a pleasure to hear that. that, you know, the, how much energy they bring, and how much they want, how much they care about the city, just want to see things work, and for everybody, so, thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to working with this council. Like, it's been mentioned before, we have a great team here, not just people on this side, but the people in the back, you know, all around, so, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Klutz.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just have to say, it's a great honor for me to be elected to the council and to be serving as Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm very grateful. I want to say a special thank you to my husband, Bill, who, you know, I left the city 12 years ago, and anyway, he has been so sweet and supportive to encourage me to do this and sacrifice my time at home, and I'm very grateful, and I love him for that. And I thank you for him and for my granddaughter, Josie Smith, from Greensboro, who came over here tonight and participated in the swearing-in on a school night, and her mother, my daughter, Sue Smith, from Greensboro. Thank you all for being here, I love you all. I want to say a special thank you to the previous council, who appointed me 10 months ago, I can't believe it's been that long, Mayor Tamara Sheffield, former Mayor Pro Tem, Harry McLaughlin, Councilman David Post, and Councilman Carlton Jackson, thank you all for your vote of confidence for appointing me in February after the tragic loss of our former mayor, Karen Alexander, who was a close friend of mine, and coming in here with their kind invitation gave me the opportunity to see really what a incredible, incredible council and staff we have here, city manager, city attorney, clerk, and the entire staff. It was an eye-opening experience for me to come back after 12 years, and just to see the progress that's been made, and how much everyone here loves Salisbury and wants the best for Salisbury. So, I couldn't help but say, okay, when it came up about running, would I try to, you know, run again? Just, I'm very excited about the future of Salisbury. I'm excited about where we are right now, and so much is happening, and it's just wonderful to be back, and I just want to say thank you so much. Thank you.
I would just like to take a few moments to do a few thanks as well. Personally, all the supporters, all the friends over literally this past decade, I first ran in 2015, and the people who donated, the people who volunteered, Mean Mug for always hosting, so many folks to thank there. Heather DePalma Spavy, thank you for your friendship, thanks for being my campaign manager, and some days, thanks for getting me into this. Appreciate you, hate you, no. Thank you so much, Heather. Ken Hinderlight and Shawnee Graham, thank you all for making me listen to that voice in the back of my head, making sure that you pushed me to trust me, so thank you all for that friendship, it's never going to be replaced. To my Dixie Swim Club family, Robin, Melissa, who's not here, Winnie, Dan, who's not here, just the overwhelming support and friendship, but always that extra little pat on the back and confidence, so thank you all for that. And Marnie Stoker, here we go. Professionally, I would like to thank the 500 people who are on Team Salisbury. You all do the job regardless of the conditions, regardless of the criticism. You all also rallied in one of the most difficult times in the history of this city, so, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. All the past councils who have ever served here, all the past councils that I've ever been able to be a part of and learned so much from over the years, all were very unique, but yet all cared about the future of Salisbury outside of themselves. I'd like to thank again all the elected officials in all the positions across Roan County, across the state, across our federal, all these partners that help and do support and still support Salisbury, so thank you all for that. I'd like to thank city manager, Mr. Jim Green, assistant city manager, Kelly Baker, our city clerk, Connie Snyder, you all are the ones that are probably closer to me in proximity of learning and growing over this past year, which has been a challenge for our whole city in losing mayor before that, and then just a special thank you to our senior administrative assistants, Adely Bear, you don't see her rarely, but she's fantastic, so, Adely, thank you for everything. Again, as it's been mentioned, thank you to all the citizens who voted or did not vote, did vote or not vote for me. That's part of this process, that's us participating in a democracy. It happens from home all the way up to the White House, it's a democracy that we all should continue to embrace as Americans, so thank you for that. My role is to act in everyone's best interest, a collective best interest for our city with what information we have at a specific moment in time, so, thank you all for that trust in me, and then lastly, I just want to thank the council. Salisbury is at a very exciting point in history, it all seems to be happening at once, all the plans, everything's happening at once, and I look forward to us continuing to work together, to learn more stuff from each other, and face any challenges that happen here, and to continue to make a home in Salisbury, a Salisbury for all. So, thank you all for being here tonight. So, one of the points of business, we're going to get to that, and then again, I promise a break. First step is to accept the agenda, so I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Some will move.
We have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number two, council to consider adopting a resolution of appreciation honoring Councilmember Mr. David Post. David, could you join us up here, please? So, resolution honoring and appreciating Mr. David Post. There you go. Oh, no, you're getting the whereas's, buddy. Oh, yeah, we're doing this. Whereas, effective local government depends on leaders who bring dedication, thoughtful engagement, and a commitment to serve in the community. And whereas, David Post has contributed his time and expertise as a member of the Salisbury City Council since 2015, serving as Mayor Pro Tem from 2017 until 2019, offering thoughtful perspective on important issues and demonstrating consistent interest in the well-being of the city of Salisbury and its residents. Whereas, David Post has worked diligently to strengthen the city's financial health, helping to ensure long-term stability and responsible stewardship of our public resources. Whereas, David Post has been a strong advocate for the city's water and sewer infrastructure, supporting critical investments that ensure safe drinking water, reliable sewer system, and a long-term protection of public health and the environment. Whereas, David Post has supported transformative projects that will lead a lasting impact on future generations, including the implementation of the micro-transit, which has enabled modern transit accessibility, the redevelopment of the Empire property, and to strengthen and promote the vitality of our downtown area, the Depot Project, which will bring expanded rail service to the community. And whereas, David Post has worked diligently to advance the future of city's broadband utility, which provides residents with affordable and reliable internet access, enhances connectivity, and empowers local communities to develop, attract, retain, and expand job-creating businesses and institutions. Whereas Douglas Adams stated, "To give real service, you must add something which cannot be bought or measured with money, and that in sincerity and in gratitude." And David Post has been a public servant who embodies fairness, compassion, and integrity. Now therefore I, now, excuse me, now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Tamara Sheffield, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, North Carolina, on behalf of the Salisbury City Council and the citizens of Salisbury, do hereby offer our deepest gratitude and sincere appreciation to David Post for giving his energy, knowledge, time, talents, and expertise for the benefit of others while serving his community, this the second day of December 2025. If I could call Councilmember McLaughlin up real quick.
First thing I got to think about, Aunt, she holds down the fort when I'm not here, when I'm here and when I'm at the store, so I appreciate all that you've done, helped me. But David, I want to thank you for, and Carlton mentioned how Tamara helped you, but when I came aboard, same thing, you were there for me to help me through those doubts and what I needed to do, so I appreciate that. Thank you for, when we used to sit there, just to, hey David, what are we talking about? Thank you for all that as well, I appreciate all you did. I mean, you had, since 2015, 10 years, so, as momentum from, I guess it's original from Mark Brinsfield, I hope I said that correctly? It is the picture.
Wow, thank you so much. Yeah, I don't care how much you have, it don't matter. So, the highest honor that can be bestowed from a city to an individual is to present you with this key to the city, sir. So, key to the city is presented to David Post in gratitude and appreciation for his outstanding contributions to the city of Salisbury as council member from 2015 to 2025, Mayor Pro Tem from 2017 to 2019, presented on this day, December 2nd, 2025. All right, so David, I know we keep making you hold off to talk, but just give us a few more minutes. So, I would like, for any of the council members who have comments, Mayor Pro Tem, I can start with you, Ms. Klutz.
I just want to say to David, thank you for all the service you've provided for the last 10 years to Salisbury in so many different ways. Thank you for nominating me to join this group, thank you for the contributions you've made to the city council and to the city of Salisbury. We'll miss you, but we know you're going to continue to do great things for the city, so thank you for your service.
Councilmember Black.
Mr. Post, I'd just say thank you, I really enjoyed your consistency and your persistency, even sitting in the audience, just attending the council meeting, you was very consistent and persistent, asking the tough questions that, you know, some may not want to ask, but you did. So, I'm grateful for your leadership, we've been having conversations at the polls during my first time running, and now my, this last election circle running, the ideas that we talked about that was able, some came to fruition, some still, we're going to work the kinks out, see if they will, but I'm grateful to always, you know, know you, your leadership, your consistency, persistency, and you always tell me not to call you Mr. Post, you always tell me to call you David, but, and I always tell you that my mom and dad always raised me to say mister or misses, so I'm grateful, and it's not, it's not, you're not gone from here, you're just on the other side, but, you know, continue to bring those good ideas to the table, and continue to challenge what needs to be challenged.
Just to add, you know, I appreciate, you opened my eyes, it gave me a different perspective, hey, to take a look at something differently, so I appreciate that, all that you have done, and had the opportunity to sit through the first two years, so, thank you. Look forward to working with you on other things.
Jack.
When I came to council, initially I was appointed, and part of that involved me being interviewed by each of the current council members, and everybody gave me a phone call, with the exception of you. You wanted to meet face to face and have that conversation, and you asked questions that nobody else would ask, and you demonstrated that same thorough approach throughout my time here with you on council. When I thought there were no questions, David would have a question. And it wouldn't just be superficial, it would be well-thought-out questions. So, if I can take anything from you going forward, it will be to be thorough and really think about what we're considering while we're up here, and holding this responsibility at the level it should be. So, thank you, David, for being such a great council person, and even a better man. Thank you.
David, we've known each other for over a decade, you and I ran together in 2015, and you were kind and thoughtful and generous with your knowledge, and you've not stopped that, and I have appreciated that more than you probably have ever realized. Your ability to, like, has been set up here, ask some of the tougher questions, pull things apart in different ways, and that's what's been great about working with you, is we all had different skill sets when we showed up, and I appreciate you sharing that, your experiences from just your life have been very valuable, working beside you, and I appreciate you sharing that with us and our community, and just, you know, digging into the details, man, you've always did it, and it's very much appreciated by our whole community, and I do look forward to working with you on that side. Don't give up on the city, keep being involved, get on the board, get on the commission. I just look forward to seeing you around, so, again, this is not goodbye, it's just we'll see you on the other side of this desk, so, thank you so much for everything that Mr. Post, I turn it over to you for any comments.
Well, thank you. Can I go stand over there, just so I can look at you and look at the audience?
Pin's on with the mic, we got to take a mic with you. Bring a mic with you. There you go.
Thank you. Well, gosh, people say the other side, that's sort of like a funeral, you know, and, I guess I just heard my own eulogies. First of all, I want to say thank you, teach one of you individually, you're remarkable people, and Salisbury's lucky to have you, you know, serving them in the future, today and in the future, so, and I want to thank Connie and Jim and Graham, you know, for all the support that you've provided to me. I want to thank city staff, which, it's so easy for us to sit here and thank them and praise them, but you just don't know what they do unless you've been here and been there, and one of the things I so strongly recommend that every citizen in the city ought to do is call the main number at Public Works, and listen to, press one for this, press two for that, then they get to nine, and it starts all over again. I mean, listen to just what that one department does, I mean, you can't imagine that one department out of 13 does all that, and then multiply that times the other 12 or 13 departments we have, and that's, those are the people that make this city work. And of course, I want to thank the voters who gave me greatest honor of my life, you know, it's been, it's been a trip, Susan and I have known each other since we were six, and I got to watch her be mayor, and it's just the idea that, you know, that I could run and accidentally win is just beyond my imagination, so I'm just, you know, as Lou Gehrig said, the luckiest man alive. The, I just want to tell you and tell city council, keep your eyes and your ears open, just listen. Just listen and see what happens. I've been to Charlottesville, Virginia, and Greenville, South Carolina, and Hendersonville, North Carolina, in these cities that have changed the shape of the way those cities are by their streetscapes. And I did that 12, 13 years ago, you know, way back when. And so when I first ran 10 years ago, if you go back and look at my literature, behind me is a photograph of a streetscape city, which was Henderson, North Carolina. I was up there visiting some friends and I thought, wow, this is really cool, the way they've, you know, made this city, you know, so inviting. And so I took that picture and I put me in front of that picture and that was 10 years ago and it's going to happen. So listen and watch and see what's happening. I was doing some work at, at the Rowing Helping Ministries and had a client there call me up one day and she lived in East Spencer and she worked at Wendy's out on exit 75 out there. She called me up and she said, I missed my bus to work, could you help me out? My office is over on West Inn Street near Krispy Kreme. So I got in my car and I drove to East Spencer and I picked her up and I drove her to Wendy's and I got back to my office and it was a little under 30 minutes. And in the process, she explained to me that, and this is the listen and keep your eyes open, you know, that I ask all of you to do. She said to me, you know, she spends three hours a day on that, on our two, on our buses getting to and from work and she made the minimum wage. And I thought, wow, that's, that is commitment, that is hard work, because she had to go on two of our routes and each of our routes are an hour and a half. So she had to do half a route to get to the, you know, transfer point, then take another bus and then on the way home, she had to do it, you know, the rest of it. Three hours a day to work, eight hours a day making minimum wage. And I thought, holy cow. And I mentioned that to Jason Walser here in town and he said, go look up Arlington, Texas. Arlington, Texas had just started this thing called microtransit, which was an Uber-style system. And, you know, that was eight years ago. And so here we are, it's finally going to happen, you know? But it, you know, the whole concept of bringing an idea, you know, that you have, when you see things happening, you know, to the citizens, do that. When I got on council, of course, Elaine Bailey had been city manager for less than a year and he came to me one day and he said, you're CPA, right? And I said, yep. And he said, would you look at Fibran? He says, there's something going wrong. When I came here, I was told that Fibran had been fixed and they gave me access to the books. And I went over to Salisbury Business Center and I went through all the books there and I met with the guy that was running it at the time. And, you know, what we discovered was, we were losing about $2 million bucks a year, which was real money, because the person before him had kind of hidden some numbers in other departments. And nobody knew it at the time. It's not that I was so smart, but, you know, I could look at these numbers and say, what's this all about? And so he said to me, why don't you see what you can do? And I started going to conferences all over the nation and I met Hotwire, as it turned out. I went to Dallas and I went to Houston and I went to Minneapolis on my own nickel, didn't charge the city for this. And I figured out what broadband was all about and I met the key players in the entire industry. And I went to Washington DC and I met these folks and I said, would you come to Salisbury and talk to us about what's going on? And that started a progression that, you know, we brought, we hired these consultants and we hired these folks. And I finally, one day, said to Elaine, I said, you got to come with me somewhere. And I drug him up to Minneapolis and he would have a couple of jokes to tell you about that trip, which I won't relay to you right now, I'll leave that to him. But we went to Minneapolis and we came back and he said, you know, we've got to do something. And the something that ended up happening was, we got a group of people together, which includes some people sitting in this room, and said, let's look at some opportunities that we have. And the solution we selected was, and this was about 20 people here in town, we, it was really kind of funny, we would, we met at the water, at the water, One Water Street and the newspaper would hang out there and we put brown pa, first day we met, we put trees in front of it so they couldn't see what we're doing, but the trees weren't good enough. I mean, you know, the indoor plants, and then we put brown paper on the walls so that you guys couldn't see what we're doing. But what we finally decided to do, we took an RFP and we got three or four bids and we finally decided to lease it to Hotwire. Now, I don't want to comment on Hotwire one way or the other, other than the fact that they used my yard one day to cook a pig. You know, we had a, we had a big party with Hotwire and they cooked this whole pig in my yard. And so, but what they did is, by taking over, they stopped us bleeding. And now we're bringing in about $700,000 or $800,000 a year. I mean, it's, we're still, still costing us a lot of money. And I got to tell you that Tamara and Susan and, where's my brain?
Harry.
Harry, golly, sorry. They're going to have some fun being on city council and you know why? Because in three years, we will have paid off the Fibran mortgage. And suddenly there will be over $3 million available to either do tax cuts, which is what some people are going to want, or to spend on some long-deferred items out there. And so, you know, something good came out of this, just because I happened to go to some conferences, because the city manager said to me, can you help me here? And so, you know, keep your eyes and ears open. I went to another conference where I saw, I met people and they said, they, we talked about some housing issues. And I brought these ideas back and I would give the conference information to Hannah and I'd say, hey, look at this. And those are the issues that are now driving, you know, some of the things that, that our staff is doing. So keep your eyes and ears open, you know, listen to people, look at what other cities are doing. And because you've got a great opportunity, every one of you just mentioned how, that you're going to make Salisbury a better place and I know you will. And I look forward to sitting on the other side, you know, breathing and, and, and working with you in any way that I possibly can. It's been the honor of my life to serve with you and to serve all of you folks and so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Council, if we could, get a motion to adopt a resolution of appreciation and honoring Mr. David Post.
Still moved.
You have a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much, David. Council to recognize John Struzik for his service as president of the Salisbury Police Foundation. Presented tonight is Police Chief Patrick Smith. Thank you, chief. Welcome, Mr. Struzik. Good, have a seat with Mr. Smith there with chief. Thank you for being here.
Stuff right here with me. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, members of the community, thank you. Tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize Salisbury Police Foundation's current president, John Struzik, president until 31st, correct?
Correct.
Salisbury Police Foundation has played a major role in supporting our department and I want you to understand the impact this support has had on our officers and the city. Back in 2020, our former chief, Jerry Stokes, contacted a group of community members and asked for help starting this foundation. Only one person answered that call and that person was John Struzik. John stepped forward when no one else did and because he did, the Salisbury Police Foundation was born. On December 16th, 2020, under John's leadership, the foundation secured its 501(c)(3) status and that was the formal start. What followed has been five years of steady commitment, strong leadership, real results for the Salisbury Police Department. From 2020 through now, 2025, the foundation has raised nearly $700,000 to support officers' health, wellness, and morale. That is an extraordinary number for any nonprofit and it has produced real measurable improvements inside our organization. The money they raise in support, they provide means we do not have to lean on budgetary funds from the community to purchase equipment and the health and wellness tools that they give us. Here's just a few examples of how the foundation has made an impact. The foundation remodeled our fitness gym and replaced outdated equipment with new, modern, high-quality gear. And they also dedicated, built and dedicated and added a dedicated cardio room. They provide meals for officers and their families from time to time again during the past few, five years, just periodically. They pay for the department's annual Christmas party, something officers and families look forward to every year. They recently purchased recreational bicycles that officers can check out and use for fitness and stress relief. They fund a wellness app that supports nutrition and yoga instruction and currently more than 40% of our officers are using that app. And just last week, they provided Thanksgiving dinner for officers both working day and night. And those are just a few things, I could keep going on and on, but I won't in interest of time. These programs matter, they directly support the health, resilience, and morale of the men and women who serve this city every day. And they only exist because the Salisbury Police Foundation was willing to step up. John, your leadership is the reason this foundation exists. Your commitment to our officers and to this community has changed our department for the better. You have made a long-term impact on our organization and we appreciate you for stepping up when the need was the greatest. So on behalf of the Salisbury Police Department, thank you for what you have built, what you have led, and what you have given our officers and their families. And with that, we're going to present you with a certificate of appreciation, and I'll read it to you. Certificate of appreciation to President John Struzik. As an expression of gratitude for your contributions and commitment to the Salisbury Police Department and to the community, we thank you for what you have built, led, done for the officers and civilians of the Salisbury Police Department. Presented December 2nd, 2025, Chief of Police, Patrick J. Smith.
You're not counting on me giving a speech, are you?
You might say something.
Thank you, chief. John, do you have a few words for us, sir?
Just a few, just a very few. Now, I give it to everybody here. When I, we came here, Agnes and I, my wife, lovely wife in the back, when we came here in 2009, this was a town that I instantly fell in love with. And I'd been to some decent places in the country, but this place, we all need to be thankful that God has provided us with Salisbury, North Carolina, to live in. I got involved in a lot of things here. The community wanted me for something and they didn't want me for some things. I ran for city council twice and so many, they didn't want me doing that. But it has been a joy of my life being here in Salisbury, North Carolina and having the opportunity to start something such as the Salisbury Police Foundation has just been absolutely fantastic for me. I know that we help you, but you don't know how much you've helped me. Thank you, chief. Thank you to all of the officers and staff in the Salisbury Police Department. I really appreciate you. And I got to stop talking now because I'm going to start crying if I don't. Are we officially done?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, chief, thank you so much. And John, you started something in five years ago from nothing, created, and you've produced $700,000 for our officers, but it's been so much more than the money and we are very grateful for you and it will continue to live on. So thank you for your leadership. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so we'll take a quick five, so everybody can disperse, hug, and all that good stuff. And we'll be back in five for council business. Thank you. Thank you.[318.44]
Once they sell a development before a house is built, says, "Go annex yourself to Salisbury." Why can't those people at some point start to participate in our city? I mean, we're taking their tax dollars. They're relying on us. I don't know how many more developments that aren't being built yet will be annexed within the year. I see so many of them going up, and I know for a fact that nobody's gonna buy a house that needs a sewer that needs well and septic. And I think that's what the big cause is. Our city is growing, and that is a wonderful idea. But if we're growing so much that we're cherry picking neighborhoods out of other little cities, then those neighborhoods need to be able to participate in our city. That's what they... Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stoff.
Connie?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Russell Hudson.
Welcome, Mr. Hudson.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, congratulations.
Thank you.
I own Queen City Burgers and Fries food truck. I lease 401 East Innis Street, which is on the corner of Innis and Long. Okay? I leased that lot. I am required, was required, to get a non-use, a temporary use permit to park on that lot that is owned by somebody else that I lease. So I said, "Okay, whatever." I went down, I applied for the permit, I got the permit, hundred dollars, no big deal. While I was there getting that permit, the main reason that caught attention was I had the swoopy flags out, and I did not know there was an ordinance for that, and I took them down. I used that for advertising, obviously. While I was there, I asked, I said, "There is an existing marquee on that lot. May I use it?" And I was told, "Yes, I could." I spent five hundred and seventy-five dollars to have a sign company put Queen City Burgers and Fries up on that marquee on a Saturday. Tuesday morning code enforcement was there because the city sent them down and said that I cannot put that sign up there. It used to be an old cigar shop, the sign was turned around backwards. It was actually pretty horrid. I keep that lot clean. I had a landscape company come in and cut the trees down that were overgrowing the marquee, put all new mulch down on there. It's very depressing. It almost feels that like the city has complete control over what happens on that lot, and I had to get a temporary use permit. So why no other food truck in this whole entire city has to get a temporary use permit to park anywhere except for Kona Ice that parks with me? I parked at Walmart for eleven months, never had to have one. None of them food trucks over by Webb Road Flea Market, they don't have to have one. Food Truck Tuesdays, okay, they all park down in West Innis. None of them have to have the temporary use permit. The guy that parks over by Ashley Furniture, no temporary use permit. But because I park on Innis Street in a very high visible area, anytime I do anything, I have to, I have code enforcement coming down on me for a temporary use permit, for a sign. I wanted to put a tent up for Thanksgiving to feed the homeless, which I did, but that was an issue, and it was granted to be up for one day, and I took it down the next day. So I hope you can help me with this. I was told that there was somebody hired in this city to do ordinance for mobile food vendors.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you.
Connie?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Meredith Hudson.
Mr. Hudson? Thank you. I'm primarily here to support my husband as the owner of Queen City Burgers and Fries. And as you can tell from running out of time, there's a lot to be said. It does seem like he's being punished because his restaurant has wheels, and we don't have rules and regulations for how to deal with that. He's, you know, in a location that's now seems to be more visible, and so it's getting more attention. He, in addition to all of the places he was at, he was also for, I don't know, a good six months at the, over by Tinseltown, and again, didn't have the permits and fees. And he had his feather flags up forever in all of the other locations. They do, you know, bring attention, and, you know, so it just feels a little unfair. Mostly, we just need to get the jurisdiction or rules or whatever it is that addresses how to fairly take care of food trucks in our city. The improvement to the lot in particular is just amazing. I mean, it was an eyesore. It is completely cleaned up. It looks amazing, and that sign, you know, some old tobacco signs turned around, you know, two, I don't know, however many blocks off of right downtown. And it looks terrific, you know, the artists that he has that produced all of his artwork, it looks great. It just doesn't seem right that it shouldn't be something. It is a privately owned commercial building or lot. He has a lease agreement to be there. His landlord has nothing but high praise for him to be there. So we're just really hoping that the city can figure out a way to help him be there because of his location, the proximity to the homeless shelter. And I think part of it just being a food truck, he gets asked for food from our homeless folks every single day, and he gives them food every single day. One of the things he started is an opportunity for his regular customers to donate a meal to the homeless. When that happens, he puts a tick, he rings it up, he puts the ticket on the window, and the folks know, "If there's a ticket hanging in that window, there's a meal for me." And even when there's not a ticket hanging in that window, he does it. He pulled together a huge amount of support through the Nextdoor app, got donations, and we cooked a meal for well over a hundred people and served them Thanksgiving meal on Thanksgiving Day, and it was amazing. It's a population in our city that, you know, is being supported by him, by his heart for them, and we just really hope that you can help him out.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Hudson, thank you. Connie?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Joshua Helms.
Welcome, Ms. Helms.
Hey, how you doing, ma'am? Good evening, Mayor, council members, Manager Green, and others, and our fellow citizens. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the council on the recent election, and we're all looking forward to seeing the changes to Salisbury through their hard work and dedicated work. My name is Joshua Helms, and I've had the honor of serving as president of the Salisbury Professional Firefighters Union Local 2370. But before anything else, I want you to know, I'm a citizen of Salisbury. The citizen, the city is my home, I was raised here. It's where I'm raising my young family and where I want my children to grow up, believing that Salisbury is a place where people look out for one another, where hard work and service are respected. I'm here tonight to obtain the best possible working conditions for our firemen. Public safety is a term used to describe police and fire, but somewhere along the way, we as a city stopped treating them as the same. We serve the same community, we face the same dangers, and we answer the same calls for help, yet we're not treated the same. That gap sends a message. It tells our firefighters that their sacrifice means less and puts the safety of our citizens and our firemen at risk. It hurts morale, it hurts recruitment, and it prevents retention. And when we can't keep experienced firefighters here, the safety of our citizens and our firemen, like I said before, are at risk. These just aren't workplace issues. These are public safety issues. That's why tonight I'm asking the council to support a public safety pay plan, one that brings firefighters and police officers together under a fair and unified pay structure. We're a one team in the field, it's time we're treated like one is on paper. But this is bigger than paychecks. This is about restoring Salisbury to what it once was, a city that was loved, respected, and safe for everyone. We need to get back to that, and the way to get there is by investing in the people that make the city strong, its citizens, its public servants, and its firefighters. We don't want to leave. We love this city, and we believe in it. We want to grow old here and raise our families here and to keep serving our neighbors with pride. But to do that, we need Salisbury to believe in us too. Let's bring back the Salisbury we all remember, the one we're proud to call home. Thank you for your time, and please stand with the men and women who stand ready to protect you every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helms.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Jeffrey Hoy.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hoy.
Well, thank you, neighbor and mayor. And congratulations to all, and their service to the community. The leadership that we have here in Salisbury is truly impressive, and as David was recounting, it's amazing, you know, we've enjoyed very much living here. In the middle of this wonderful evening, I think we also need to be cognizant of a challenge that a certain segment of our community is facing, that we all need to be more aware of, and that is the fear which is gripping our Hispanic and Latino neighbors. We're all part of the community here together, and some of the business owners have just closed their doors, but then maybe opened them back up again. Workers have stayed home from work, but then maybe the risk level isn't quite so great, so maybe they're back to work. People have been afraid to go grocery shopping because, you know, who might be in the parking lot and what kind of uniforms or guns they may be carrying. I heard the story from a teacher, the child in their school, a ten-year-old girl was crying, and he could, you know, "What's wrong, what's wrong?" Well, she was afraid the bad police were gonna come get her, and she knew the difference between the good police and the bad police. You know, in response to this, I have good news for you. You may or may not be aware that as we put out the call to try to develop rapid response teams in the neighborhood, to be aware of rumors, to check them out, to see if they're really, you know, somebody going to try to arrest folks or not. And we had seventy folks show up to a meeting, just like that, to say, "How can we help?" And of course, the training is, you know, you use your phone, the camera there to take pictures, to record what's going on, to not be confrontational. And, you know, so we now have forty to fifty people available and ready to be watchful who drive by places where Hispanic folks work to see if there are any of those SUVs around that may be trying to arrest folks. I wanted you to be aware of this. I also wanted you to be aware that the, one of the, I guess it's a national group known as CEMBRO, is doing some training this Sunday afternoon at four o'clock. I want to invite all of you to that. It'll be at Democratic Headquarters, 1504 West Innis. You're all invited so that we can be helpful and supportive of this community, which is, quite frankly, fear-filled at this time. So let's stand together, let's serve all of our people, and make this the best community that it can be for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy.
Mayor, that's all of our speakers tonight.
All right, thank you so much. At this point in time, I will close the public comment. Just one thing, Mr. Green, I know that you and your team have been following Mr. and Ms. Hudson, so if you guys can continue to do that.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Development Services is working with them, and will continue to work with them.
Right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Counsel, moving on to agenda item number six. Counsel, to consider a text amendment to land development ordinance to amend Chapter 12, to create a new sign type for local historic landmarks and properties listed individually on the National Register. Our presenter tonight is Planning Manager Victoria Bailiff. Welcome, Victoria.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, new counsel. Tonight, we have text amendment TA 2025-09-0012 for you. This is an amendment to the sign chapter, Chapter 12. The petition was submitted by the Historic Salisbury Foundation, and this was a fairly simple text amendment. It just requests to add another sign type to our sign chapter. The sign type would be Historic Property Identification Sign. These would be small signs with a maximum of four square feet in area and six feet in height. They would be non-illuminated and would only be for properties that have either been designated as a local landmark or if they're listed on the, if they're listed individually on the National Register of Historic Places. It would not matter whether or not they're in a historic district. These signs could be attached to a pole, a fence, or a building wall, and they are mostly just for identification purposes, so that's why they are intended to be smaller signs. Staff finds that the amendment request is in line with Forward 2040 Policy 10.3.2, recommending to protect noteworthy buildings, places of historic merit and significant works of art, and encourage local historic landmark designations within and outside of historic districts. This amendment was reviewed by the Technical Review Committee, the TRC, at their October 16th meeting, 2025. The TRC recommended approval of the requested amendment, and it was then forwarded to the Planning Board, which held their meeting on October 28th. The Planning Board found the request to be consistent with the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval. Are there any questions for staff before we go into public hearing?
Thank you, Victoria. Any questions before the public hearing, counsel? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this text amendment to the land development ordinance? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring back Victoria, thank you. Counsel, any further discussion needed at this point?
Question on the sign as far as off the building. Is the height and the size in conjunction with what we have with others, other signs? I know at the store, we used to have a marquee, but we told them we couldn't put it because it was too high in size. So is it still within, the landmark still fits within the regular signs and the marquees?
So this would be, this was actually requested for the Hall House because they wanted to have a pole sign, and the historic district did not allow pole signs. So if any local landmark property or individually listed property in the National Register wanted a sign for identification that was outside of what is normally permitted within their district or historic district, then this would apply, where they would be able to go up to six feet in height, but it would be only max four square feet. So it's not really for advertising purposes, mostly just for identification, because four square feet is not that large. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, in a way, so as far as the restrictions for the advertisement signs, is it similar to, I know it's historically a bit different, but as far as size and height and those things, requirement still within the city, or that's something different that you can do outside?
It would be a different sign type.
So it could be higher than what?
Yeah, it would be treated differently. If they wanted like a larger just wall sign, they would be allowed to go by the underlying district standards for that. This just allows anything kind of beyond that. Like the Hall House wanted a pole sign, pole signs are not permitted, but this allows them to have that, so it allows them to potentially go beyond what is permitted in that district. But it depends on what's permitted in that district. Because it varies between commercial properties and residential properties. And it also depends on the street frontage, what type of street it's on, as to whether shine, whether shine size that's allowed is. And this four square feet would fall under, the height and the square footage would fall under what is permitted for most sign types anyway.
Okay, all right. But this ordinance allows it to go beyond that if needs to?
If it, if it needs to, within this, within these restrictions, the six feet in height or the four square feet, that would be the max for this sign type.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? If there are no questions, I'll be glad to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The city, I'd like to make the motion, the City Council hereby finds and determines that adoption of an ordinance to amend the land development ordinance is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Land Development Ordinance of the City of Salisbury, North Carolina. Counsel, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Victoria. And hey, while you're here, let's move on to the next agenda item. Counsel, to consider adopting an ordinance to amend the existing conditional district overlay on 12.88 acres located at 1040 Julian Road.
Thank you, Mayor. This is rezoning amendment RZCA 2025-10-0005. The Grand on Julian to LLC has petition for an amendment to the existing conditional, the existing conditional district for the property that was previously approved for an apartment complex located along Julian Road, just south of the I-85 interchange. The parcel currently has a base district of RMX, residential mixed use, and is surrounded by other properties that are zoned highway business, community institution, residential mixed use, rural residential, county zoning district, commercial, business and industrial, and granite quarry zoning across the street. The property is partially wooded and slips downward towards the pond in the center of the site. The property does have a blue line stream and wetlands, but has no 100-year flood plain. The master plan proposes a 208-unit campus-style apartment complex. The original master plan was approved by council on December 7th, 2021. The section in the LDO 5.10.82 requires that porches and balconies be a predominant feature along the street-facing facade of apartment buildings, and the applicant has requested approval of one design alternative. They are requesting that the porches and balconies be replaced with bay windows along the Julian Road frontage, as you can see with this bottom elevation example. This is, the one on the top is the one with the porches and balconies. The bottom is what they are requesting. The future land use map has this property designated as multi-family community. The proposed master plan is consistent with the assigned place type in the future land use map, and staff finds that the requested rezoning amendment is consistent with Forward 2040 Policy 8.3.2, recommending to ensure multifamily developments such as apartment complexes and condominiums have adequate and well-designed open spaces centrally located for the enjoyment of all residents. The amendment was reviewed by the city's TRC Technical Review Committee on October 16th, 2025. TRC recommended approval with no comments. This was forwarded to the Planning Board at their October 28th meeting, where the board found the request to be consistent with the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval. Are there any questions before we go into public hearing?
Counsel, any questions for the public hearing? Thank you, Victoria. If not, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak for or against the conditional district overlay in this location?
Good evening. I would like to just know why they are doing this. As a person who likes the outside, I'd rather have a balcony than an enclosed space, and I just wondered what the rationale is. Thank you.
You state your name for the record, please.
Dottie Hoy.
Thank you. I know we know you, but some other people may not. So for the record, thank you, Ms. Hoy. Anyone else to speak for or against?
Good evening. My name is Sheldon Lovelace with PDI Architecture, the design firm who's been working with the development team to see this project through. And first and foremost, congratulations to everyone on your elections or your reelections. And to answer the person's question, the decision that was made to change these balconies, which was probably more of like a 50% ratio to 100% ratio for that elevation or those frontages of Julian Road specifically, which in that site plan view, you could see, it really only consisted of two or three buildings, I think it's two specifically, is to, is to give those tenants that option to have a little bit more privacy from the road noise that is Julian Road. And so there are a slew of other units in the total development that do contain those balconies and those portions that are required for those outdoor persons or otherwise who would prefer that type of unit. So it's not a restriction by any means, but it's actually just a thought to the users, the end users of those dwelling units, that they have just a separation from a busy road that is Julian Road. So thank you for your time and your consideration, I do appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Anyone else to speak for or against? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask Victoria to join us again. Counsel, any questions or further discussions? Yes, thank you for clarifying that on Juan O balcony. There are other units available, so it's not for all of them, just that frontage piece. So I appreciate that clarification. Counsel, any other questions, discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I have one question. Expected finish date?
Twenty-four months of construction, you know, January of '28, maybe, probably closer to April. We've got to get through TRC.
Okay.
So, yeah, summer of '28.
Okay, thank you.
Go home, too.
Any other questions, counsel? Just looking for that motion.
Right, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, sir.
The City Council hereby finds and determines that adoption of the ordinance amending the conditional district overlay for partial 063026 located at 1040 Julian Road is consistent with goals, objectives, and policies of the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan and map amends the reasonable due to compatible with the surrounding use. Therefore, I made the motion to adopt an ordinance amending the land development district map of the City of Salisbury, amend the existing conditional district overlay from 2020. Julian Road approximately 12.88 acres to permit a designed alternate request.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Bailiff. Moving on to agenda item number eight. Counsel, to receive the annual report from Downtown Salisbury Inc., presenters are the economic and downtown development director, Seda Trappman, and downtown coordinator, Claire Carricker. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and counsel, congratulations, everyone. I am here today excited to do an annual report for Downtown Salisbury Inc., the nonprofit that helps manage the Main Street program for the City of Salisbury. And as you can see, I'm not here alone. Claire Carricker, our downtown coordinator, is here. She's here to answer any questions about promotions, marketing, because she is the brains behind those operations and does a fantastic job. So I wanted to make sure everyone knows the hard work that she puts in, and our admin specialist, Cynthia, who is not here tonight, but, you know, she's an integral part of the team, and we even have an intern. So we are a growing team, and we're excited about that, and we are excited to present tonight the annual update. Just as a little background, this does fit in the city's strategic plan under a couple of different sections, economic and workforce development, sustainable infrastructure, and cultural amenities. But I do want to give just a little orientation about Downtown Salisbury Inc. and how it operates and kind of what the purview is. So Downtown Salisbury Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has a memorandum of understanding with the City of Salisbury. That memorandum of understanding outlines the goals and the objectives of the nonprofit. That memorandum of understanding outlines the goals and the objectives of the nonprofit and how it interacts with the city. Obviously, there's close interaction as we're city staff and also help run the nonprofit. But it also explains that the municipal service district tax dollars, which is a special tax implemented only in the area that is outlined in the map on the screen. Those tax dollars are, can only be spent in downtown for the benefit of downtown, and they are allocated to the nonprofit to perpetuate the Main Street program. That tax rate is point one five six, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as we're discussing the, the successes of downtown Salisbury tonight, we are talking about the nonprofit, which works obviously very closely with the city, but is, is a separate entity and has a board of directors of fifteen people, of which we have some city representation, but it's predominantly made up of residents, business owners, and property owners and stakeholders of downtown. So this is the area we're specifically talking about, and we like to come every year because we are so closely connected to the city to give an update. The downtown Salisbury Inc., as I mentioned, governs the Main Street program, which is an accredited national program. We're accredited each year based on the following metrics, community support, having a vision and mission statement, having a work plan, the historic preservation ethic of the community, having an active board and committees, a strong operating budget, professional management, attending ongoing training, reporting of key statistics, and having a Main Street membership. So every single year, every single one of those accreditation points has to be achieved and proven, not only to the national Main Street program, but also the state governing Main Street program. And Salisbury has been an accredited program since nineteen eighty. So we are one of the, we are the longest running in North Carolina and, and one of the longest running in the country. Main Street operates, uh, doing economic development through the lens of historic preservation and uses the Main Street approach or these four points to do so. So we have an organization committee that works on partnerships for downtown. Then we have economic vitality, which focuses on making sure we're recruiting businesses and retaining them, as well as coming up with tools to help support those businesses. Our promotion committee, which Claire is in charge of, that markets and promotes the downtown with event and communication. And then our design committee that partners with a number of other city departments to ensure the aesthetic and historic nature of the downtown is maintained. So I don't expect you to be able to read these details. This Main Street impact report is available on our website. You can either just Google downtown Salisbury impact report, or you can do our, go to our doing business page at downtownsalisburync.com, and you'll be able to find this. This is something we publish annually to basically track with the public the success and what's happening in downtown. There's always a lot of projects going on, continual movement, and we want to make sure that the, the public knows that. So again, it's available on our website. It's the four pages long, um, and it's also shared via social media. We do little snippets, so it's a little more bite sized. We, again, we, we don't expect you to be able to read all of it, but we did want you to know we have an annual report to share with the public the, the good story of what's happening in downtown. And just a few highlights from that, um, annual report. Um, over the past year, this is twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. That's the, the fiscal year we, we reported on most recently. We did see almost seven hundred thousand dollars of public investment in downtown and over five million dollars in private investment. Very exciting to see that those public dollars leverage the, the private dollars. And it has resulted in twenty-five building and facade improvements, three net new businesses, new part-time jobs. And again, Claire and, uh, the team really do an amazing job of getting volunteers, so over sixteen hundred hours of volunteer hours. Because as a staff of three with a part-time intern, we can't do it all, and so we are very grateful to the volunteers and the other staff who do assist us. I do like to highlight the statistics just cumul- cumulatively. I track since twenty twenty nine, since that's when I can validate the statistics that we have collected. And I think these are really important numbers to show four and a half million dollars of public investment and over fifty million dollars of private investment in just four years. That's, that's significant, and that shows that people, not only locally, but really across the region and, and state are, are seeing Salisbury for the gem it is and wanting to invest in the, in the buildings here. So we've had over a hundred and fifty-one improvement projects between the facades, the building, and the public improvements that have resulted in twenty-five new housing units. And as many of us know, we have a lot more coming with projects currently underway, including the Empire Project, Alley in Maine, and, and many others that are happening on Main Street. So we'll, we'll continue to see that number grow, which is exciting. And then again, excited to see seventy-nine businesses opened and over four hundred jobs created just in the municipal service district. Those are, those are game-changing numbers and, and things that make the needle move when we're talking about the economic vitality of our downtown. Just a couple bragging points. Again, Salisbury is well-known across the state for being one of the original Main Streets and longtime accredited. We also are known for the great projects and teams that come out of Salisbury. So the twenty twenty four Main Street Awards, the Bell Block Building at the corner of Fisher and Main Street did win best adaptive reuse project. And then our very own Public Works team won Main Street Champions, and so we are very excited to celebrate them and very appreciative for all the work that went into them becoming champions. We have a number of current projects. I won't highlight all of them because I know we're, be here forever if we go into everything we're working on. The two things I really wanted to touch on were the two new grant programs that the nonprofit has begun offering for the community. Those are dollars that are going straight into businesses and property owners. It's very important that we are, are giving back to the, the people who are coming and maintaining businesses in downtown. So one is a special events grant program that allows the opportunity for people to collaborate and host events in downtown and gives them some resources to be able to do that, so that, you know, Claire is one person. She can't do every single event that happens, um, every single weekend in Salisbury. We want those businesses to be able to collaborate but have the resources to do that, so we have a grant program for that. And then there's also a Main Street Support Grant Program that offers businesses, property owners, and residents the opportunity to apply for funds for not just exterior projects, but actually projects that may include training for staff or marketing opportunities or interior outfits. And so thus far, we've awarded fourteen grants through that program, and we're opening another round in January. So excited to see the impact that those grants are making in the community. And then the other one I wanted to highlight is the downtown welcome signs. I know that's something the city has really, um, supported. It's come to council previously, and, um, down, the Rowan County Tourism is the one funding that project, though, again, partnership between city, D S I, and tourism. Just wanted to give a happy update. On Thursday and Friday, I believe weather pending, those signs are going to be installed, so you'll see four new welcome to downtown Salisbury signs at the gateway, gateways to downtown on both East and West Inn Street and North and South Main Street. So appreciative to Tourism for, for that work, um, city for supporting it, and we're, we're actually partnering with two private property owners to be able to get some of those signs up too. So, um, two really good updates on, on some of those projects, though you can see we stay busy with many other things throughout the year as well. That is all I had. Again, our annual impact report is available online, so, and if you want a printed copy, we do have those in our office as well. So public and council, if you're interested in those, please reach out. We're happy to share those, but we're happy to answer any questions about downtown Salisbury as well.
Thank you both so much. Mr. Green, anything else to add?
Just a, a thank you to the team and a lot of great things happening in downtown Salisbury, and just appreciate the partnerships. And, uh, uh, just wanted to share this tonight. No action needed, but, um, just proud of the work that's going on downtown.
Counsel, any questions or comments? We've got the experts right here.
Go ahead. Is the, these, uh, is it available in the local businesses, the impact report? Or is it just available at City Hall and online?
Uh, it's just available in City Hall and online, but if there are local businesses who would like to carry the report, we will happily share copies with them as well, so that they're able to, to share that with the public, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, my thought behind it is because just get that broader, uh, audience, able to go in and shop those businesses, be seeing what our downtown, um, is doing, look at the numbers on, on paper. So I think that'll be a great idea.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you all so much for, uh, your report. I know you do a lot of work, to your point. Uh, you mentioned, Claire, you are one person, and you do a lot for five people. So thank you so much for your contributions. Absolutely. So thank you all.
Thank you. If I could, I'll indulge and take the plug of Holiday Night Out is this Friday, and Claire has spent a number of hours making sure that holiday spirit will be festive all throughout downtown Salisbury, impacting every corner of the municipal service district, and it will, it will be snow, sleet, rain, whatever we end up having on Friday, we will be out spreading cheer. So thank you, Claire.
We look forward to it. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to agenda item number nine. Counsel to consider authorizing the city manager execute a contract in the amount of four thousand dollars to Kim Lee Horn for the downtown parking study. This item is included in the twenty twenty five, twenty six budget. Thanks for staying here, Seda. Turning it back over to you.
Of course. Thank you. Uh, this, uh, for some of you may be a familiar topic because this is one that I brought to council just a few months ago before we really, released the request for qualifications and reviewed basically the intent of the project. At this point, I'm excited to say we have, and when I say we, I mean, a team that has worked very hard on this, are at the point where we can award a contract. And when I mention the team, I do want to thank the, the multidisciplinary team that came together to help me with this. Jared Mathis, Tracy Keys, Wendy Brindle, Kelly Baker, Jacob Horn, and Claire Carricker spent a lot of time with me reviewing the, the proposals that we received, interviewing the firms, and, and helping come to a decision, and I could not have done it without them. So just wanted to say thank you for that. This does fall under the economic and workforce development focus area of our strategic plan. And again, just a reminder and, and explanation for those tuning in. This parking study goal does have a limited focus area. It's not the entire downtown. This is focused on the South Main Street corridor and around Bell Tower Green. It's a start, and we wanted to focus on that, one, to have a really focused report that comes out of it, but also because there's so much development happening in that area. So again, South Main Street and around Bell Tower Green. And the goal is not necessarily to, you know, come out with a specific plan. We're not going into this saying this is what we want. We're not designing anything. We want to hear from experts who have done analysis and work with stakeholders to understand what we're seeing. So as I mentioned, experiencing, uh, experiencing a period of significant investment and growth, knowing we're having that, we want to do an analysis of parking supply, demand, access, and multimodal connectivity. So we're looking at the parking, um, the access, the event impacts there might be, but also some multimodal elements that, that could help alleviate some of those concerns as well. This, it was a rather lengthy process to go through this, and, and it's because we received really, really quality proposals, which is exciting and, and made our job a little harder, but I think it, it made us land with truly the best team possible. So I mentioned, a multi-department team came together and reviewed all of the requests for qualifications and received six proposals during that process. The team scored all six based on completion, experience, project understanding, approach, and availability from all of the firms. And based on those scores, the top three came in for in-person interviews with the project team. Our team then scored all of those based on the capability, the project experience, their outlined approach and scope, including what the city's participation may look like in that, were they asking more of the city, or were they pretty much going to be handling the, the coordination of the project and coming to the city for expertise and other needs. So out of that, we had a final two firms provide scope outlines to ensure that we were comparing apples to apples, and Kim Lee Horn was selected based on their impressive depth and quality of scope. Had a fantastic presentation and really were very communicative and, uh, you know, willing to work with the city. So it was a, although it was a long process, in the end, I feel very confident again that this firm is going to treat Salisbury very well for what we're looking for. So what they are proposing is, uh, in their scope of services, is pretty much exactly what we asked for. Project management and coordination, uh, current parking inventory and analysis, ample stakeholder engagement that includes an in-person interactive workshop, focus groups with key stakeholders, and an online survey for broader reach. They'll assess future demand forecasting, offer recommendations, and then provide reporting and documentation, including a presentation, excuse me, including a presentation to council with a final report. I want to emphasize the stakeholder engagement. That is something that I've heard very clearly is, is key to this project, and I agree with that. We are not trying to, um, do a study in a, in a, um, just by ourselves with city staff looking at this. We're trying to make sure that, um, the community who is impacted daily by this is also included. So there, again, the, the firm is aware of this, and we feel very strongly the stakeholder engagement is key. As I mentioned, they'll do the assessment and make recommendations, and, and what that will look like in terms of deliverables is a downtown parking and mobility plan, um, not only with the baseline assessment of what we currently have and a summary of what we hear from the stakeholders, but also the future forecasting analysis and then an implementation matrix, so showing, um, what their recommendations may look like and how those may be weighed or considered in future growth and as development happens. We will receive all of the materials related to the study, and then again, there will be a public presentation to city council so that everybody is able to hear the results. Our timeline, um, is to, in, during this month, hopefully get contract approval if council feels that it's appropriate, and then kick off the meeting with the project team and firm. We anticipate about six months for the, the, um, study to be completed with research, data collection, engagement, and analysis. The firm has committed to twice a month meetings so that the city is continually updated, and we're able to communicate clearly on the project with our needs, but also what, what they may be finding. And I will say, some of the analysis may come later because January is not typically the most visited month in downtown. Um, and so they don't want to do a parking study where they're doing an analysis of current demand in a month that may not represent the most average month for our downtown. So a few of these steps that I've, I've outlined may take place at, at different times of the year, but again, anticipating, uh, June twenty twenty six, being able to come to council with a report on the findings. Important notes from, that I've reiterated, or that I'm reiterating from last time. The forty thousand dollar, uh, contract fee has been approved, it was approved in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget for this project. And I did want to make note because I've had a couple people ask about it. There was a downtown parking study completed in twenty nineteen, and it was more broad, focused on current supply and some policy implementation and less focused on future impacts. It also covered the whole downtown. So as I said at the beginning, this time we are more focused, um, more high, more focused on future development and how that impacts and how the city can responsibly grow with that development that's happening and, and, and what we may need to look for. So the action tonight, uh, the request is for council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract in the amount of forty thousand dollars with Kim Lee Horn for the downtown parking study. And I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, you may have.
Thank you, Seda. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Trapp?
I have a question. Uh, how much did we pay the, the last, um, firm that we paid for a parking study? I know it's very more broader, but we're trying to get more detailed, you know, and something you may not be able to answer at this moment, but curious.
I, I don't know off the top of my head. It hap- and I, I think it actually occurred before I even lived in Salisbury. I'm happy to find out for you and, and get you that answer of, of what that cost was.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions?
The study itself, will that consist of analysis of current parking and recommendations? The study itself, will that consist of analysis of current parking and recommendations for expansion, alteration, all of that under one umbrella?
Yes, so they will, um, they'll assess current, what we currently have, the current inventory, um, both public and private in downtown. And so as they look through what we currently have and how it's currently used, because they'll also do studies, um, basically spending the day and, and assessing how parking is used in downtown as well. Um, they'll take that information as well as information about the development projects that are coming and anticipated use of those buildings. I mean, one example is 130 South Main Street becoming an event center. That's, you know, a pivotal building that will, will certainly generate a parking need. Um, so they'll take current, future demand, um, with their forecasting methods. And then they'll come up with, um, I mentioned, the implementation matrix. So that will consist of, um, you know, this is what you may need, this is how you may be able to implement it. This may be the considerations, pros and cons that you need to consider as you're looking at this. So that it's a tool that council can really use to help make future policy and, and help make future decisions about what we may need.
Thank you. And that was based off the restricted area? I think you showed a map of what areas that was going to be?
Yes, so that is, it's, it's going to be focused specifically in the area outlined in blue. Um, so, oh, this is Bell Tower Green, this is Innis Street, and it goes the, down to like the graffiti park. So it will consist of the, the main street, South Main Street corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Not to entertain a motion?
Make a motion. To authorize city manager to execute a contract in amount of $40,000 with Kimley Horn for a downtown parking study.
Counsel, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seda.
Moving on to agenda item number 10. Counsel receiving update on the Mayor's Book Club. Uh, presenter is Parks Rec Director Keisha Cox. Thank you for being here.
Out in a dis, Christina.
I was like Christina Rea, you know, again, listen, counsel?
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor and members of council, and congratulations. Thank you for the opportunity, uh, to share this initiative. I'm excited to present it, uh, to council with our collaboration with our friends here at Rowan County Literacy Council. This initiative is a part of your strategic plan, specifically under the key focus area of culture amenities. It also aligns with the goals of healthy, safe, and engaged neighborhoods while embracing the belief that a literate community prospers. The saying it takes a village to raise a child remains as true today as ever. I am deeply grateful for the village we have here with our great team and partners who will implement, execute, and evaluate this initiative. We are always looking for passionate, engaged, and connected volunteers to support. Here are some ways you can volunteer. So you can register, support monthly reading sessions, read to children, or help lead discussions, support book distributions or activities. And can always contact Alec Fournay at salisburync.gov or 704-216-7529 to become involved.
And then just some, um, logistics on the Mayor's Book Club. Um, first looking at the impact of 45 students, starting with the students that we currently serve through City Parks. Um, after school with Miller Rec Center and, um, the hope for this project. We all know that if your library is full at home, you have better outcomes. Um, so ensuring that each student as part of this engagement is able to take one of those books home every month to fill their home libraries and then opportunities for guest speakers. If we're talking about working as a vet or a doctor, um, engaging some community members to make that reading come to life. Um, and we will do this through some sponsorships, um, on the end of the literacy council to provide those books for those students. Um, and then the neat partnership with Parks and Rec is the idea that we can come up with field trips and activities, vocabulary, um, things to do with the students to really make that learning come to life. Um, and here are just a couple of selections and we'll get together, um, and nail down exactly what these books, um, will be, especially with Mayor's personality and making sure that we capture lots of joy through the reading.
It's going to be comic books, just so everybody knows.
That was the first, month one, comedic. Um, but also thinking about making sure that these books represent the, the whole of Salisbury and all of, all of our students. Um, and also being really intentional, these are opportunities to maybe talk about what it means to save and financial literacy, um, what it means to be as part of a community. Um, a lot of our students are going through figuring out what a good friend looks like. Um, so just thinking and really taking feedback from the students in the classrooms and teachers and making sure that this, um, selection of books is meaningful and impactful for them.
So that's the Mayor's Book Club, um, and it goes right into our initiative. And this partnership is also with Rowan County Public Health. And we want to thank our friend, Amy Smith. Uh, she's very supportive of Parks and Recreation, very supportive of this literacy initiative. Also want to thank my team, um, Parks and Recreation. They're very committed, um, they're engaged. They're the ones that evaluate, measure, um, this program and they work every day with the children and also the community. And again, Rowan County Literacy Council for their support with this. And this is a, um, it looks like the stand that will be, um, installed, so that gives you a brief picture of that. Um, once again, the saying it takes a village to raise a child remains true. We're fortunate to have Amy as, like I stated, as for her dedication, um, to literacy in the community. Uh, thanks to Amy's efforts, we secured funding to purchase approximately 20 story walk stands at no cost to the city or our community. I'll turn this back over to Christina so she can talk about that.
And again, leaning into this collaborative lens, um, with the city and with public health. Um, we walked the greenway and mapped out where these stands could go, um, thinking strategically about its placement right near Overton and Knox. Um, a lot of kids are riding bikes down the greenway. Um, so we were really thoughtful in where could these be? Um, so we staggered 20 of those stands up until that covered bridge of the greenway, um, 10 up and then 10 back. And then, um, with the literacy council, we work closely with the school. So we'll ensure that there's, um, um, planning with them. If they can't do a whole 20, um, stands of reading, maybe we start the first five and finish the last five and the kids can write what they think happened in between. Um, so there's lots of opportunities for engagement with the city, the school system, and just the community at large. And kids can get up and walk, right? Let's be healthy and read and learn at the same time. Um, and with these volunteer opportunities for the story walk, um, along with a selection of books, we also think that this could create some neat opportunities to engage the community. If it's an art contest and we display some of the artworks in these 20 stands, um, if we open up some spaces for our community members to write and submit their own books. Um, so with that, we'll have a, a ton of opportunities for community members at large to engage in not just reading the stories, but being part of the story.
So, um, like I said, this falls under culture amenities. I wrote something down that, uh, really, um, inspired me to want to present this initiative to the city of Salisbury. It says literacy gives understanding and understanding oftentimes give a voice to the voiceless. And that is very important. Uh, my mother was a teacher. She's been deceased for about 10 years. And one of the main things that she always stated that, she said that, um, I believe every child can learn and every person in our community should have an opportunity to learn and have their voices heard. So to learn to read is to light a fire. Every syllable that is spelled out is a spark. Victor Hugo. So what we're asking council to do is to consider accepting a donation of approximately 20 story walk stands valued at $6,620.56 to be funded by Rowan County Public Health Grant and to adopt a budget ordinance amendment to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget in the same amount to appropriate the in-kind donation. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I'll turn it back over to council. Do you have any questions or comments, counsel? Yes, Mr. Green.
And maybe Keisha, you could talk a little bit more about how the story walk will be installed.
Yeah, so our, uh, public works team, um, has graciously accepted another task, uh, to install our 20 walk stands. So we're grateful for Chris and his team.
Thank you.
I noticed there's a QR code. Is there a way to track how interactive, how what, who's using it and how often it's being used?
Yeah, we, we spoke specifically about QR codes, um, in give feedback to book ideas, um, and maybe making sure that students and, and teachers and community members that are going through there. Um, so we'll work together with QR codes, um, at the start and at the end. Um, and then Keisha also mentioned that there's some geo-tracking that can help us kind of see what the usage patterns look like, um, along the way.
Okay, great. The reason I'm asking if it's su- success, I'd like to see this maybe city spending money to expand this process through other parts of the greenway, not just this section. So that's, so I'd like to be able to make sure we can keep track of that. So we're going to come one day and present it to council and say, hey, we need to add some more, so.
That's the goal, definitely. Um, we'll have Amy to continue to seek grant fundings to, uh, expand this initiative.
All right, thank you.
And also just putting, um, Salisbury on the map, there's a North Carolina Story Trails Library that you can look at and our region is blank. Um, so there is not a story walk. The closest one is Davie County, um, in our community. So I think this could be the catalyst of, um, increasing movement and learning and reading in the community.
There's also one in Mooresville and High Point, but nothing around Salisbury, so it would fit us on the map.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Make the motion.
Uh, I would just like to, first of all, Christina and Amy, thank you all for your involvement. First, the vision, Keisha, thank you. Amy, thank you for the money. Like, can't forget that, can't forget that. Assuming we're going to pass this. Uh, I would say that, um, I've been fortunate enough to serve on the Rowan County Smart Start Board for several years. And it's, uh, about success from zero to five, so it's before you get to school. And we continuously talk about the success and the opportunities that kids have. The more books that they have access to, it makes a difference. It makes a difference. And knowing that fairly recently, the support for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, where children get books mailed to their homes, has been stopped in the state of North Carolina. So once you, if you were on that program, you got it, but as you age out, obviously you age out. But there, we're not adding any more people in the state of North Carolina. So know that we're just the smallest little piece that we can do here to do the two things. The Mayor's Book Club, you can get a book in somebody's hand and they can take that home. And to be able to be outside and learn. Keisha, I think you said to me one time, and I'm going to say it wrong, but what I heard you say was if people are outside and moving, they're learning.
That's right.
And this is a, a, just the best combination of that possible, so, so thank you for that. But, uh, there's a lot of organizations that are doing their best to, to the doctors' offices and trying to get more books in kids' hands because one of our biggest outlets has been, uh, stopped in the state of North Carolina. So, uh, thank you for this. Uh, yes, Mr. Reglachlin, you are right. If we can keep expanding this, if we have a way to show that it's successful, it's a great investment in our youth. So it's a great program, so thank you all. And yes, I would love to hear a motion about this.
I'll make that motion. Motion to accept a donation approximately 20 story walk stands valued at $6,620.56 to be funded by Rowan County Public Health Grant and to adopt a budget ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget in the same amount to appropriate in the in-kind donation.
Counsel, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all so much for this opportunity. Thank you. Connie slipped me a different paper, so I got to make sure I don't skip anything. Moving on to agenda item number 12, uh, city's attorney report. Mr. Coria.
Nothing for my report tonight, Madam Mayor. Congratulations to all of you for your election. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 13, city manager report. Mr. Green.
Mayor, members of council, again, congratulations. Looking forward to working with you. Uh, and I'd like to invite our finance director, Wade Furchess, to come up. Uh, as council knows, we, uh, do an annual audit. Wade and his team, uh, lead that audit and work with an outside auditor. And we've had a little delay this year, uh, not on, by anything that we've done. And we're not the only city going through this and we need to ask council for an extension. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Furchess.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, uh, members of the council, as Mr. Green said, we do have an audit contract, uh, for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2025. The, the date of submittal on that audit contract is, uh, December 31, 2025. So no later than six months from the end of the fiscal year. There was some delay even, even before the federal government shutdown on getting out an omnibus. I mean, I'm going to say this correctly, the Office of Management and Budget Compliance Supplement, the compliance supplement, um, there was a delay in getting that out. That supplement is used by auditors in auditing federal and state grant expenditures. So we get the money from the federal and state various grants, we spend it. Auditors audit our, uh, compliance with how we use that money. That is part of what they call the single audit. Well, then the federal government shut down for 43 days. And all during that time, that compliance supplement did not come out, of course. So, w- once the federal government reopened, the compliance supplement was issued November the 25th, which the, uh, local government commission realizes puts us all in a bind as far as getting our audits finished up. Because not only does our audit firm have to finish hours up, but they're one of the largest, uh, firms that they do more local government audits than anybody. They've got a lot of work to do. So they can't get it done and get everybody's done. So the local government commission has put out, um, a blog saying that, uh, they, they understand our dilemma and they're going to give us 43 extra days. So now we have until February the 12th of 2026 to get our audit in. But in order to take advantage of that, we have to have an amended contract to ask for that extra 43 days. So what I'm asking you to do is approve, uh, an amended contract to allow us that extra 43 days. And, and we will not get our, our audit will not be done by December 31st, so this is really needed. Any questions?
Thank you, Wade. Counsel, any questions? Not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Make a motion to amend the audit con- contract, contact. That was adopted by council at its February 18, 2025 meeting to extend the latest submittal date to February 12, 2026.
Counsel, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Wade, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Mr. Green, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, council comments? Uh, start with council member, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, nothing in particular. Just thank the staff for all the work you do. Looking forward to new things with a new council. And I know we'll be successful because we've got you. Thank you.
Mr. Reglachlin.
Echo that and just thank you. Um, I look forward to work with everyone, you know, pushing this new agenda, especially we're looking forward for January, whenever we all get together and decide how we're going to, what we're going to do.
Thank you. Just what?
Uh, just thank you. City staff, again, uh, humble and grateful for the opportunity. Look forward to working with each one of you. Um, it's going, it's going to be a good year for the city of Salisbury, so staying, look forward to working with council, city, and city manager also.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim comments. Ms. Lutz?
I'd just like to say, as you know, I spent four years living in Raleigh, uh, being a part of state government. And it gave me a different perspective of Salisbury after being mayor here for 14 years. I had the ability to see Salisbury from a state perspective and how unique and special we are. And I'm really proud to return to this city government. We have an excellent council and, um, manage- We have an excellent council and manager staff. It's exciting times to be here, great things are happening, and I'm just looking forward to the future with you all.
Got you. Thank you. First of all, again, congratulations to all the council members. I think you all said it best, it's going to be a good time, but it does take all of us. It's a collective body, and it's collective with our citizens, and it's input. We're only as good as our input, so appreciate that. I hope tonight you all heard an overall common theme of collaboration across community departments, our community partners across departments, all those things, and that is truly what it takes. I would like to thank this past week, all those involved with all the tis the season events, the parade, and the tree lighting in honor of Mayor Alexander. You all made it successful and safe, and I know that was a big concern for a lot of folks. So thank you all for putting in that time and your dedication for the city herself. Also, happy holidays to everyone. We do not have a second meeting in December, so I hope that everyone stays safe, look out for yourself, look out for others, be kind, and it looks like I'm going to be reading a book over the break. So with that, I will close with our announcements. Should I read my paper or the one on the screen? Because they're both, the paper, okay. Sayda gave me a heads up. So downtown Salisbury Inc. will host a holiday night out on Friday, December 5th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. throughout the downtown district. Enjoy free photos with Santa at the Railwalk Pavilion, rides with the Grinch on the antique fire truck, crafts with the Salisbury Police Department, the Yeti's Dance Party with falling snow on West Fisher Street, or rain, or we don't know what we're going to get there, and Hot Cocoa Crawl featuring treats from local businesses. Holiday performers and characters will be stationed throughout the downtown. For more information, please call 704-638-5238. The city of Salisbury will host the New Year's Eve at the Bell Tower Celebration on Wednesday, December 31st, 2025, at the Bell Tower Green. Festivities will begin at 9:00 p.m. and include food trucks, live entertainment, a live video feed from Times Square, and ringing in the New Year at midnight. For more information, please call 704-216-PLAY or 7529. Also, once you get done celebrating the New Year, go back to your house, start pulling out some stuff, because our Winter Spruce Up Week is that following week. It will be held January the 5th through January the 9th of 2026. This will, this week is designated for residential customers who have city of Salisbury garbage service. Items will be placed on the curb before 7:00 a.m. on your regular garbage collection day. For additional information for the list of acceptable items, contact Public Works at And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you all for a great night. Welcome aboard.